To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we humbly come before you this evening to thank you for this opportunity to gather
as a town council and to discuss and vote on items of importance to our community. We're grateful for all that are here and pray for thy blessings to be upon them in their presentations and discussions. We feel very fortunate, heavenly father, to live in such a beautiful area. We're grateful for the moisture that we have received, for we know that it has been a great blessing upon our forests, the trees and the animals, and even filling our reservoirs. We ask you to continue to bless us with those things that we stand in need of. We pray for our law enforcement and fire first responders, we'll say that, and grateful for their sacrifices and pray for thy blessings upon them. We also pray for a special blessing upon our businesses locally. They have done well through the pandemic and they have staffing shortages and we pray that some of these issues will be able to be resolved soon. We ask thy blessings in this area. We say this humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you Keith. Item B on the agenda is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience and council action on items brought up in call to the public is limited by the open meeting law. The council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard or discussed in call to the public. Individuals are limited to three minutes. And we have Ron Wilks who would like to speak at call to the public. Yeah, please come up and use the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Ron Wilks. I reside in Pine Top and I'm an avid pickleball enthusiast and tennis enthusiast. And I am an ambassador to the United States Pickleball Association. Pickleball, the game with a silly name, is exploding all around the country. I'm pleased to be here tonight to present a certificate of appreciation to the city officials who were instrumental in bringing public outdoor courts to accommodate this amazing growth. And to an amazing youngster, Kylan Atkinson, a wonderful youngster who took the initiative to have the Woodland Lake Tennis Courts repaved as part of his Eagle Scout project. Kylan can't be here tonight. He's on a special mission out of town. His brother Alex will accept the award and certificate on his behalf. And his parents are also here and I'm wondering if they could please stand, please, in recognition of this award. These folks are absolutely amazing. They raised a youngster that is just fantastic. The history of this was that the courts were, needed to be resurfaced. And via fundraising effort initiated by Kylan along with the city officials, he, Kylan initiated the fundraising. And the way I understand it, the city officials carried forth with that and helped him with the resurfing of, resurfacing of the tennis and pickleball courts. I'm pleased to report that these courts are used almost every day for both tennis and pickleball. So if you go to Woodland Lake now in the morning and go to those courts, it's being used. And it's just a wonderful thing for both the residents, visitors that come to our community to have that as an outdoor public facility. So thanks so much for this fantastic effort. And I would like now to present these certificates of award. And the first one will go to Kylan and his brother Alex will accept that. Barbara, if you can bring that up? If you could come up here, I'd appreciate it. Just give that to Kylan, to Alex, thank you. And the next one, maybe if I may, could I have these folks for a picture up front here, is that okay?
Yes, she may.
Okay, good. Okay, Keith Johnson, city manager, please, if you would. Matt Patterson, the Public Works Director, please, if you would. And Melania Spillman, Assistant Public Works, I hope she's here. Wonderful. Our mayor Stephanie Erwin is not here, so I would ask perhaps Jerry Smith to take that award on his, her behalf. Good. And I was chatting with Shauna, Alex's, Kylan's mom, early today via texting. I understand that Frank Nogano was also instrumental in this effort. I was not sure about him, I wasn't notified, so I will provide him with a certificate and I'll try to have that done by Monday, Tuesday. So in closing, this is a really an amazing effort. I've nev- I get involved in trying to bring courts and different, and introducing pickleball to different communities. But I've never heard of a, I guess he was 16 years old when this started, 17 years old, take the initiative to do something like this. It's absolutely incredible and it is a credit to these two folks back here as their parents to have done this. And I would just like to in closing, I would just thank you so much for this effort because this is great for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you Ron, thank you Kyle and family, appreciate that. Item C on our agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed in the consent agenda are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of town council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda are considered in their normal sequence as listed on the agenda unless called out of sequence. Item C1 is consider approval of the minutes of the town council meeting held July 15th, 2021. Item C2, consider approval of the town clerk register for the period June 1st through June 30th, 2021. Anybody have questions or want to have the, any items removed? Council abuse?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please raise their right hand or left. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item D, business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the vice mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. In this case, it will be after. Questions from council members however may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the vice mayor at any time. Item D1, presentation and update from Pine Top Disc Golf, Jack Wood.
Please use the mic.
Okay, does that work better? Thank you.
My name is Jack. I've been a disc golfer for quite a few years. Retired from White Mountain Computers. I operated that for 33 years up in Pine Top. I moved up here in 1981. So needless to say, I love the community. I love, you know, what the community is doing, what we've done, et cetera, et cetera. I have played on the professional disc golf tour, including four world championships as well as 14 professional tour wins. I've toured many, many states and played many, many courses, so certainly a little bit of my resume. We had a chance a few years ago to develop a disc golf course in Pine Top at the Metta View Park. I'm very, very proud of the course. We've been working on it for 20 years and it's still work in progress. This is actually a print I did on some T-shirts a few years ago where I actually referred to the course as Disc Golf Heaven. And I'd like to show you a little bit about why. Disc golf, if you're not familiar with it, is played like regular golf. But instead of throwing, hitting a ball, you throw a disc at a basket. This is our Metta View course. And what we've done on the course is we've created tee pads and paths heading toward the baskets. What's fun with disc golf is instead of ball golf where you have fairways, on disc golf you quite often have to throw through the trees and kind of shape your shot a little bit, sometimes left, sometimes right, et cetera, et cetera. The course has multiple pin placements where you can put the baskets in different locations. So actually you can also alter the course as, you know, the season progresses. Let's go that way. The course over the years and years is one of the cleanest places in the park. You know, every year we manicure, remove rocks, pick branches, trees, et cetera, et cetera. We've developed paths, numerous, numerous other items in the park. Here I've used a little bit of brick siding to help not only create an obstacle but also protect some plants that, you know, a jennifer I thought was pretty important in the play on there. So it actually enhances the course with, you know, decoration, obstacles, et cetera. Over the years, we've actually promoted the disc golf, you know, with the schools, local activities, a lot of other things. When we built the course in 2001 is actually when we acquired the Mountain View Park. And 20 years ago, I came to the council, asked permission to use the land to build this with the support from local businesses and community. At the time, we actually took in $500 each to sponsor Hole. Some of the sponsors shown on the signage that we still have up today, you know, includes Nav�pachi Electric, Cellar One. We have Christopher Garden, Sheilay Restaurant. Those sponsorships again, you know, for helping build the course gave us the opportunity to install the course, donate the course to the city. You know, for no, no cost. And actually it's been 20 years now since we've really, you know, kept on improving the course. And a little touchy here. 20 years of recreation tourism with little or no, actually there's been no maintenance costs, you know, the golfers even emptied the trash out there. One thing to highlight on our course also, I can't, you know, pass, is how we've changed the lives of so many people up here. Right now, we have three golfers that come from Pine Top that actually have won amateur world championships. One to highlight in particular is Paul Yuliberry. In 2007, I took him to Tulsa, Oklahoma, he was like 17 years old, to play the World Amateur Championship. There's 500 players there. Paul came in first place. Now since that, Paul's been a touring pro. He drives around, his sponsors, RB, gets paid for his tournaments and et cetera, et cetera. And he actually is, you know, one of the most popular players on the disc golf tour. Today, they're playing a tournament in Illinois, the Ledge Stone. And this will actually be on YouTube. A lot of these tournaments are on YouTube the day after the event. He's playing with the number one disc golfer in the world, Paul Macbeth, on the featured card. And they will be on, you know, YouTube, if you want to Google it, you know. Other notable golfers in the area include his brother, Paul Yuliberry, got started a few years later. Paul plays on the pro circuit in the 40, in the 40-year-old division right now. And repeating, he does. And Pete on tour now has his over 30 wins. Somebody highly recognized or to be recognized is Ken Swafford. Ken did join us today. And I want to let you know that Ken helped us from day one, you know, build the course, maintain the course, and also helped develop the new course. Ken also plays on the pro circuit, on the PGA Tour. And he has 23 wins under his tour. Nick Duran, Junior World Championship, four times when he was growing up, four times as a world champion. And also to be recognized, Connor Rock, we just had a tournament up in Pine Top. 20 of the best pro players in the state. And Connor Rock beat them all. He graduated from Blue Ridge High School a couple of years ago, currently attending NAU. And he's definitely, you know, going to be the next superstar. Now during the seasons also, the year, we sponsor different tournaments. Every tournament we've had sponsored this year has sold out. Now we started out with the Ice Bowl, that one actually goes in February. And we also had national tour event up here, the National Amateur Disc Golf Tour, was in May, over 100 players. The tournament I run each year is the Autism Tournament. This tournament, I put registration online in May. It sold out in 12 hours. The next tournament we've got coming up is the Top of the Pines. That's actually in August 21st or so, I believe. We're allowing 170 players on that tournament and it is also sold out. The tournament that we've just conducted, The King of the Mountain. As with every tournament, we print custom discs for the tournaments. And we distribute custom Pine Top discs for all the local players, including T-shirts for all the players. This year, I awarded over $3,000 in cash prizes to the pros and over $8,000 prizes to the amateur divisions. We played this at the lake, the New Lake Park, and also the Metta View Park. This is an autism fundraiser. And I do boast that we donated $8,600 to the Autism Foundation. Also with the tour of our new course, which is ready for play, it's still in development. Some of the responses I had from the players is that it is their favorite course in Arizona. Also comments included that we used alternate routes, we protected the baskets, we just had a great layout. You know, certainly I set my bars up high when we gave this opportunity to design the course. But I want you to let you know, we didn't disappoint you. Okay, we've got a great start, we've still got a long way to go. The new course is played in Metta View Park. Flows around the baseball fields. I wanted to keep the baskets kind of secluded away from, you know, most traffic. We do start on hole number one and hole number 10, right by the edge of the lake there. I also was able to create a nine-hole family course. The family course are very, very short. These placements between the baskets. And that's not only for families, it's also for special needs for all age groups, which is currently enjoyed, you know, on the disc golf. I would like to introduce AJ Peterson. AJ Peterson graduated from Blue Ridge about 10 years ago, local boy, wonderful family. Very, very, very good disc golfer. He is actually co-designer on the course. He will also be the PDA, Professionals Disc Golf Association contact. He is a certified official and he also has been a certified manager. AJ will be here in years and years and years and years to come to help maintain and progress with this course. The course, we had some outstanding help from the city to help get this in. We had hundreds and hundreds of hours of volunteer work to get this in, to get it started, ready for the tournament. You know, again, we still got a long way to go. We've got a lot of brush removal, as you know, they've just thinned the forest out there. And they took down the big, you know, trees and left all the small branches behind for us. We've got a lot that cleaned up, but we've still need a lot of rubbish to do out there. Building the course, we utilized existing paths. We trimmed all the dead branches, speak up, took out a small, few small trees, but utilized existing paths. And there, you know, we didn't disturb, you know, the forest at all. If you've been in the park, you might notice that on one of the holes, it's actually the one in the bottom right corner there is hole number 18. We built a brick surrounding enclosure for the basket. Now that, when you play golf, is actually referred to as an island. If you take your disc, you land inside the island, then you're safe. But if you land out of the island, you get a penalty stroke. Now this is hole 18. You know, I designed that as a very short hole and very challenging as well. So it's really a turning hole too. You see some twos on that hole, you see some threes, some fours. It just makes a great finishing hole on there. What's in progress, needs a lot of work to be done. And really, honestly, one of my pet, you know, projects here is I really, really looking forward to developing this, is the three-hole special needs course as well as the nine-hole family course. We do have the baskets in on this course and a, you know, preliminary layout. Though we do have a lot of work to do in the way of cleaning up the course. I really need some paths, some benches, you know, on the course. Signage out of the whole course. Right now, we just have temporary signs on there. What I've done on one of the holes on the kids' course also is I utilize some of the brick, landscaping bricks. And that's also creates an obstacle, but it's also in there to protect bushes, you know, some of the fractured trees I have right there. Okay, let's go the other way. At our existing course, we've created some, you know, what I refer to as obstacles, some challenges. On the top right there, you see AJ on what I call a pyramid. We've raised the basket. The basket's also no tree surrounding it. And it gets a little challenging when it's windy. You not only have to throw up, you also have to throw in the wind a little bit there. On the bottom right there, I use the landscape bricks actually to surround the basket. This gives you a challenge not only to get within the enclosure, but also if you don't do that, it's a little bit of punishment. Some ideas I've got from some other courses, which we haven't placed our practice basket out there. We need a practice basket, you know, for a good gathering place to meet people, et cetera, et cetera. This is actually a course in Chandler, Arizona, where they, you know, encircled their practice basket and, you know, and filled it with gravel. Now some courses have got kind of creative on here. And, you know, attractive, but you must admit, you know, it's a playground as well. These are a little bit overboard on my outlook to speak of. But it just, you know, some ideas that we've got some opportunity to really, you know, work on this. Anyway, in conclusion, I do want to thank, you know, the city for the opportunity of doing this. I want to let you know that this golf, over the years, not only has grown tremendously in our community, but also it has grown tremendously in the country. Right now, there's over 7,000 disc golf courses in the country. And starting yesterday, we will be on ESPN Sports. They live broadcasts on a lot of the major tournaments, contract signed this year on that. Special thanks from AJ and myself for letting us help design and install this course on here. I'm asking for the city's permission to continue working on the course, to be creative, to work with Parks and Rec, you know, on making this course shine. You know, we've got a lot of opportunity. A lot of the courses, and a lot of the players we get are from the valley, from Phoenix. And the ball, or the disc golf courses there have a few trees and obstacles in the way. But boy, you know, courses like we have and the opportunity up here with, you know, making the tunnels, the alleys, the protections on the baskets, really is what I know are two of the best disc golf courses in the state. I want to say extra thanks to the Parks and Rec, you know, on helping work with this project, putting in the tee pads, digging holes for the baskets, you know, the expertise, the direction that they've given us. It's just been great, outstanding. It's been a wonderful, wonderful partnership. I also do want permission to allow hole sponsors on the disc golf course. If we have some businesses that want to help, you know, enhance the course, is I would like to have the approval to recognize them on our signage. Thank you for your time. And in leaving you, I do want to leave you with the discs. These are the discs I distributed this year, you know, for the tournament. Everybody in the tournament got a disc. And as you can see, every year I put Pine Top Lakeside, you know, on the discs. Make sure they know where they've got it from and make sure they come back.
Thank you. Anybody, council, have any questions for Jack? Thank you for all you do. We appreciate, we appreciate the extra people that you bring to town. Item D2 on the agenda is, is consider the appointment of Jeremiah Lloyd as the Community Development Director for the town of Pine Top Lakeside. Development Director for the town of Pine Top Lakeside. Town Manager Keith Johnson?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Smith and council members. You know, one thing I do have to say, that I know Matt and his crew did a phenomenal job laying the cement for those tee-off pads, 27 of them, to get them ready for this last tournament. And I, you know, they just were really going great guns. The weather, the rain we'd prayed for started coming in and so, but they still got it done. And I found one of those saucers out there Sunday after your event, so I've got one, too. It looks like a lot of fun. Let's see, tonight, I'd like to introduce to you Jeremiah Lloyd. Jeremiah, if you could come up. Some of you have had the opportunity to meet Jeremiah already. Jeremiah has worked for the town of Eager for the, for five and a half years. He was the Community Development Director and as a town engineer there. And I feel very fortunate to have someone of his caliber experience and education in this position. His experience also includes several years as a civil engineer with Navajo County and Yuma County, and he also worked for the city of Cholo. One of the areas that has been a challenge in the past is site plan reviews, especially commercial stormwater drainage systems. Jeremiah's experience is also, as an engineer, is in stormwater systems. And this has been a problem that we've had, we've experienced recently with commercial developments. I believe that his experience in this area will help us to avoid costly mistakes to the developers when they have to go back and fix things that were not caught in the site plan reviews. And so, again, I'd like to bring him to you for your approval and acceptance. I'm just glad to have him here. Any questions? Yes?
And I believe you're a PE, right?
I am a licensed professor. I actually grew up in the White Mountains. I've lived here since 1982. I've lived in Pine Top since 1992. I went to Blue Ridge, and my mother is a schoolteacher there, retired. My father owns a business in Pine Top. And I've worked, I kind of did the rounds all around the White Mountains, and I always lived here, but now I get to work here, so it feels like coming home.
For me, PE is a big deal. It kind of says you're serious about your profession, so that's right.
Other questions? This is an action item. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the appointment of Jeremiah Lloyd as Community Development Director for the town of Pine Top Lakeside.
I hear a second?
Second.
Councilor Hastings seconded.
Yes.
All those approving, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Then that motion carries unanimously. Thank you and welcome. Appreciate your picking Pine Top, Jeremiah. Item D3, consider resolution number 21-1585 and the approval of the memorandum of understanding regarding the Northeastern Arizona 911 Users Association. Chief Dan Barnes, you're up.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. This agreement is between the Northeastern Arizona Users, Users Association for 911, and that kind of encompasses all the sheriff's offices and police departments in Navajo and Apache County. The current administrator for NAUA is the dispatch supervisor out of Navajo County Sheriff's Office. So since she's the administrator, she's, her and her agency have agreed to handle the bill payment procedures for state 911 billing. Under this agreement, that administrator has agreed to administer the grant funding that comes from the state for 911 bills around the whole state. Or, I'm sorry, just in this user group, which is Navajo and Apache County. As an agency, we have responsibility to provide that administrator certain items each year, which are GIS data, which gets provided by Catherine here at the town each year, plus the dispatch center also provides all of our call data that we have for 911. That's required each year for them to compile everything and figure out the cost amounts for each agency that's participating in 911 system. On the financial side of this, there's no, there's no cost to the town currently or in the future. There's no, because right now, the grants are paying for everything. There's no, nothing being said by the state that they're not going to have any grant funding coming up in the future. But I want to give you some, an idea of kind of the costs that are associated, just for the town of Pine Top Lakeside. We currently pay a $1,200 a month base fee for services, and we also share an additional $10,700 in maintenance costs, and between $20 and $30 per call for long-distance calls through the CenturyLink system. That kind of totals $19,000 roughly for each PSAP that operates in this user group. So if the funding did dry up, then, then the communities would bear that burden to pay that cost. So, so we're fortunate to have, you know, the state paying all this through the grants, and to have a administrator with Navajo County taking care of all the PSAPs within that user group. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer that.
Is that in our budget if we ever had to spend that?
Well, that, this cost isn't specifically identified in the budget, but we could if we had to. I mean, you know, what we've already budgeted is, is our other costs, you know, what we pay Cholo for dispatch services and those things.
Okay, any, anybody else have any questions? I would entertain a motion from the council.
I'll move to adopt resolution 21-1585, entering into a memorandum of understanding for the North, Northeastern Arizona 911 Users Association between Navajo County and Apache County Sheriff's Office, Cholo Police Department, Pine Top Lakeside Police Department, Snowflake Taylor Police Department, and White Mountain Apache Tribal Police Department for 911 billing, bill payment procedures.
I second.
Counsel abuse. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Chief Barnes, you're still up. Item D4 is consider resolution number 21-1586 and the approval of an intergovernmental agreement regarding the Northeastern Arizona Law Enforcement Training Academy. Chief Dan Barnes.
Mayor, or Vice Mayor and Council, thank you. This agreement actually came before council in April of this year. They brought it back to us to, because there was some language in, in the agreement itself on item number 10, the last sentence in that, they've added in some sovereign immunity language. Also, they added the expiration date from 2022 to 2024. So they asked that this be brought back to council and, and looked at. This agreement is between the Navajo County Community College District and the Pine Top Lakeside Police Department. They, they agree in this to provide officer standards and training through Arizona Post for qualified applicants that are sponsored by law enforcement agencies. Due to the close proximity of this, this academy, it's very beneficial for us and everybody in Navajo and Apache County to utilize it. In fact, a lot of agencies around the state are utilizing it now more because they've got, they're getting housing on the academy grounds, so other agencies can come in and utilize it as well. Part of this agreement also asks that those agencies that are participating in this provide either instructors or advisors for the academy. We currently try and help as much as we can with advisors. We don't really have the staffing to dedicate a full-time instructor for them, but we can do instruction here and there on various blocks of instruction at the academy. Financial side of this, the only cost of the town is overtime required to, if it's outside the normal 40-hour work week, and they're instructing, we'll, we'll cover overtime costs and vehicle usage as well, so. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Counsel, any questions?
I am. So Chief, if, if we were not utilizing this academy and we were sending them to either Phoenix or I don't know where, Tucson is the other one, I believe.
Phoenix, Tucson. There's one in Prescott also.
What, I'm assuming that our costs, as we sponsor candidates for that, would be significantly higher, correct?
Significantly higher. The average cost for the other academies around the state right now is $12,000 to $15,000 for the initial costs, plus all your housing and per diem, you got to, and vehicle usage going back and forth from, from our rural part of the state, so.
So the point being that even though there is some overtime-related cost and, and some personnel cost, we're far ahead by having this academy here locally.
Absolutely. It's very beneficial to the town.
Thank you, Counselor Watson. Anybody else, questions? This is an action item. I'd entertain a motion.
I, I move to adopt and approve resolution number 21-1586, authorizing the chief of police to enter into an intergovernmental agreement pursuant to ARS 11952 between the Navajo County Community College District and the town of Pine Top Lakeside Police Department to provide northeast, yeah, Northeastern Arizona with a police academy, Northeastern Arizona Law Enforcement Training Academy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Hastings seconded. All those in favor, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? That resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief Barnes. Item D5, consider resolution number 21-1587 and approving a general easement agreement between the town of Pine Top Lakeside and Betty Mallard and Joseph Mallard for drainage ditch maintenance associated with O'Malley Lane. Public Works Director Matt Patterson.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Jerry Smith and council members. Tonight is another one of the easements that we've talked about in the past. This is the second one. What we want to do is keep trying to gather up that large drainage along O'Malley. So I've kind of gone into the detail, and I think you guys are all aware of what's going on out there, so I'll bury you all the details again tonight unless you would like me to explain the whole situation.
Questions?
How many more do we have?
Quite a few. It's going to be a long process, so we'll just keep at it, and, and we're at the point now that we've made enough, we've gotten enough data back that we know that we got to do some flights and really determine how that's going to get built out. So there's going to be a long, a long process ahead of us to make that whole drainage system out, work out there, so.
I really feel it's so important, and I appreciate your persistence. Excellent.
I keep sending them letters. We have one other person that's already contacted us after our, I think our third set of letters that we've sent out. So we'll, we'll start knocking on doors, too, and trying to get them to, to agree to this so that they understand.
Any other questions? This is an action item. I would entertain a motion.
I move the adoption.
In your mic.
I move the adoption of resolution number 21-1587 and approving a general easement agreement between the town of Pine Top Lakeside and Betty Mallard and Joseph Mallard for drainage ditch maintenance associated with the O'Malley Lane.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded to approve this resolution. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor Smith.
Item D6 is a public hearing for FY 2021-22 budget and consider resolution number 21-1588, adoption of the final budget for the town of Pine Top Lakeside for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Finance Director Rodolph.
Yes, good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. What we have before you tonight is the final budget. A few weeks ago, you all approved the preliminary budget, and that was, the preliminary budget was in the amount of $23,434,340. This final budget is $6,115 lower than what we asked you to approve in the preliminary budget. What, what I found was there was one mistake in the tourism and promotion budget that we presented to you in the preliminary budget. There was a line item that was listed, but the formula was wrong, and it didn't get included in the total. As you know, once we pass the preliminary budget, we cannot increase that amount. We can only decrease it. So I had to increase the one line item by the $33,885. To compensate for that, we had some extra money that was just a place mark in the grants fund, and so I lowered the revenue in the grants fund $40,000, and I lowered the expense item for a CDBG grant that we don't have anything designated for yet. So I lowered the grants fund by $40,000 and raised this one fund by $33,885. So hence, the, we're asking you to approve the final budget in the amount of $23,428,225.
Thank you. Does, counsel, any questions?
Keith, maybe just one quick question, or, sorry, Kevin. In regards to final budget adoption, is it, is the restriction that you can't increase the total budget overall, or can you also not increase the individual fund budgets for like general fund or whatever?
Sure. The restriction is the overall total budget amount.
Hey, thank you.
Any other question? This is a public hearing. Citizens who wish to speak may do so for five minutes on, on this agenda item. Does anyone from the public want to speak? I will close the open public hearing because no one wants to speak on this. This is an action item, and I would entertain a motion.
I would move to adopt resolution number 21-1588, adopting the final budget for the town of Pine Top Lakeside for fiscal year 2021-2022.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the final budget. All those in favor signify by saying, raising your right hand. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Job well done.
Big job.
Thank you.
Item D7, review and discuss proposed floor plan for the new police department building. Public Works Director Patterson and Chief Dan Barnes.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Tonight, what I want to do is I want to go over what we've got laid out for the PD. Me and Dan and Keith and Kevin and, oh, I broke the stand. We've been meeting with the staff out there to go over the, the different items in here, and one of the biggest items is the bathroom and the layout of the bathroom. However, so far, we have had very good comments. Today was a really good day with the staff at PD. We had some really good feedback, and, and they really got into talking about the building. The overall layout, what I want to talk about a little bit is, you start on the far side where the Sally Port is. One of the things that, that our officers don't have is a Sally Port, so we've added that on the outside of the building, an armory. The reason we've done that is it's got to be out of block. The armory does, and also the Sally Port, so we kind of tied those together, and then the Sally Port goes right into the, the jail and the booking and those areas. Some of the things that we've looked at is size. the booking and those areas. Some of the things that we've looked at is size. So one of the things that PD and, and Dan can help me with this is we've been looking into how they function. And one of the things that we've realized is that a lot of their stuff, when they arrest somebody, they bring them in for booking, they do their paperwork, and then it's, it's their procedures to move them down to the annex or to Hobrick. So we tried to really make everything smaller in the jail because it's not designed to be a, a house. It's not a holding facility. Thank you, Chief. Moving over is the evidence. We've had a lot of issues with our evidence, especially with the way we store stuff because they don't have that equipped space to store the different things properly, such as money and weapons and drugs. So we've got that into the plan here to add that on. Moving down, the, in the, the training room and the briefing room, if, if you've been to Public Works, for a good example, that, the, the room that the guy sit in at Public Works, that's about the exact same size as this. So it's about thirty-nine foot wide by about twenty foot, twenty-five foot wide. So it's a really good sized training and conference room for, for the PD. As you move farther down, we have the HD storage, which is the records. And one of the things that I've learned through this process is that we're supposed to segregate that out from the patrol officers. And so the records clerks and record clerk and the, the admin are the ones that are supposed to have access to that. So what we did is we created a back door into those, into that and segregated that out from the patrol so that they didn't have interaction with the, the records as they have before because the space is just not available to do so. When you get to the end of the, the HD record storage, that's the end of the existing building. So remember that that is all the existing building. One of the big challenges that we looked at over the last years, we were going through this process, is what do we do with PD when we're trying to rebuild their building? So some of the flaws in my, my original design was I didn't have space to move them to, to do the remodeling that needed to be done. However, when we first looked at this, we didn't have the revenues coming in from online sales to go after a bond or do what we're doing now. So that all kind of changed and morphed into what we have here. So the new building, a big part of our design was to try to find room for everybody to move into while I remodeled the old building. And we've accomplished that here and we're pretty excited about that. We've also been able to make patrol something that can be used into the future and have space for future patrol officers. We know as a town that, that we're hurting for patrol officers and we know that if there's ever additions to the town, that that's where it's going to be. So in this design, we have about twelve spots for patrol officers. And right now, Dan, do, how many do we have on, on each, on each shift?
Each shift is just two officers, no problem.
So we have room there to expand. We also have some other, you know, Chelsea with code enforcement that can use one of these cubicles. So these cubicles are actually, what we're looking at is it'll be a pony wall that'll be about four or five foot tall and they'll actually be little offices. Even though it's open, we want that openness so that they can, they can work together as a group. So that gives us something that we didn't have in the last plan is the ability to expand a little bit. If you go down from the patrol, one of the things that we really took serious too was the open concept. We really wanted an open concept for the patrol and the sergeants and everybody to be able to work together in that area. However, we also know that administration needs some peace and quiet in the area to, to really get their work done as their work's different from the patrol. And so what we did is we made an administrative suite to house that. So the chief's office and the commander's office and the administrative assistant have really this little suite where they can, they can get their work done without lots of interruptions as patrols coming in and out. To the front of the building, one of the things that's kind of trending across the United States is the interview and safe room. And that's something that we really wanted to get implemented in this plan. So it gives you the ability, if somebody needs to sit down and talk about something that happens to them, they're not doing it in front of other people in the lobby. They're able to go into these safe rooms that will have different types of locking doors and an officer can come meet with them. And then that way, they're not spreading their life story with anybody else that's out, out in the lobby. Or if they feel in danger, the front lobby can allow them into one of these rooms so that they're, they're safe until an officer can get up there to help them. And we're really excited to be able to add that. Right now, we don't have a front receptionist, but we have a spot for her right now, the, or him. We have a records office and that person does both jobs as of right now. And as we expand, that'll be an, an extra office there for, for that person that we should, we'll need someday. Lastly, the, the elephant in the room is, one of the things that we've really struggled with is in PD's, you have a bathroom issue and we're still working on that. And, and this isn't the final on the bathroom. We're actually working with the architect to change it some. And what we're looking to try to do is officers, when they go use the restroom, they have all this gear on. They need a place to be able to take it off. And so a, a regular stall doesn't quite work for what they need. So we were looking at trying to make a multi-use unisex type bathroom where there was multiple stalls that were actually rooms so that they could do that. And, and it really is feasible for all the staff. However, there's been concerns as you can imagine. And one of the things is, is it still feels like a restroom. And so, and we're calling it the unisex restroom. So we were, we're looking at doing it a little bit different. What we're going to look to is try to move the sinks in those bathrooms and make them actually individual, their own bathrooms individually. So you'll have, you know, six or seven stall, six or seven rooms that are actually their own, their own rooms. And that gives them a lot of freedom. So one thing is, is that, you know, you might be out and you get dirty and, and we won't go into the details of what they get dirty with, but they need to come back and change. And that gives them the ability to go in there and change. So one of the things that we were looking at is some of those two, those three showers there, we're looking at doing maybe two showers with a toilet and a, and a sink in there. So they can go in there and change and use the restroom and get, get good again and get back out there. However, to accommodate the needs for both genders, it's hard to do two full separate bathrooms. So we're really starting to look at individual restrooms all the way through there. And so after talking with staff, I feel like we've got a better direction on how we need to go about that and what, what they feel comfortable with and what their significant others will feel comfortable with too. Because this is a hard, this is a hard step and a proactive step into the future because it's hard to find other police departments that have been built this way. They just build massive bathrooms and one or the other doesn't get the use that it, that it's built for, if that makes sense. So that's kind of where we, where we've ended up on, on the restroom thing. Did I cover that good enough? Do you have anything to add, Dan?
I don't, I think Matt's kind of covered the, the entire layout. We've really worked long and hard on trying to think hard about our, how we operate and to fit it into the existing building. The original designs we looked at early on in this process just didn't quite make it work with, by, by kind of flipping the design around and, and the single story new addition, everything really flows real well. The, the officers patrol area are more in, in one area around, around the sergeants and the detectives and the administration and, and the, the front records area. It's a more cohesive work area for everybody to, to work out of. We've got plenty of space now for the, the record storage. The, the training is, is very important to us as well. We haven't had a training room in many years now, so it's hard to do training in the building or even host training and bring in other agencies and other organizations that provide training. So I think overall, it really fits our needs right now and look forward to moving forward with this project, so.
I, I have a question. You're, you're going to be revising your floor planning, Dan, again?
Yeah, we're going to be revising just the restroom. Everything else, everybody seems to agree on. I just need to make the bathrooms act, actually individual bathrooms instead of the sink separated from the bathrooms. So that's what we're going to kind of do is around that outside edge, there'll be actual individual bathrooms and some of them will have showers in them as well, just to give them privacy and that we can have all genders in the locker room and they can use these.
So will we be getting another?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send out a revised one. I don't think that we'll come back to council with, with that, do you think?
No, but if you do have any suggestions, we're looking at flow, things are missing, concerns, anything, you can address it now if you, if you spotted anything or let us know. After, at some, at some point next week, we'll be taking this, sending this back to the architect and then they'll begin drawing up their plans. All that will come back to you as it gets prepared for approval.
Yeah, if I, I'd like to look at it again and a little bigger scale if you could.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll send it to you. I can either send it to you or I can print you off a big one to look at.
Anybody else? Want to look at them again?
No, I don't really have any question.
It helped for you to explain what you were doing.
But the question I have is, do you foresee that our training and briefing room would be available for public or others or no because of security issues?
I'll let Dan answer that. I, I kind of like the, kind of the, the concept that show the police department has, it's more of a community room and training room. I think the size of this is probably too small for that type of function. It's more, it's better use for us just to how, do our own training in it. I mean, we possibly could use it for some sort of, you know, event or something that we have going on there, but we're, we're not going to designate it as a, a community room at this point, so. Yes, ma'am.
I have two quick questions.
Counselor Hastings?
I'm not familiar with the term Sally Port.
Up to the mic.
What is the Sally Port?
Sally Port is a, like a big garage that you can drive into.
Okay.
And the, the door can actually come down behind you.
Okay.
So if there's something, some sort of altercation or something that happens in there, they're contained in that, that area. They're not able to run off or, or anywhere. It's, it's under roof, so if it's raining or snowing out, they can get, get people out a little easier. So.
The second one was, I'm concerned about the restroom down on the lower right-hand side. That's a public restroom?
Yes, ma'am. That's for the lobby.
That's by law. We have to have a...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're required to have one up front in the front lobby. So we have one now and it's just something that we do. It, it's, if you have public in there, you don't want to bring them to the back. So it's...
That's what I was, that's what I was saying, the safety issue.
Yeah, we want to keep them separated and, and we really want to harden that so that really public won't leave that interview safe room. That's about as far as the public will make it into the public, the PD building. And that's the intent.
Okay, who is, who exactly is in the lobby? How many individuals?
It just depends on the day.
Depends on the day. We have, we have seating in our current lobby for about eight people and most of the time that doesn't get filled up at any given time unless there's something big going on. So we're planning on, on the, the, some of those walls that are in there, putting back in eight to ten seats for people to sit. And most of the time, people come in, they just stand because they're interfacing through the, the big window with staff, so.
Where's Vic's place?
We, we did discuss that. We're, we're putting something on the exterior of the building to have the dog be able to go into when he's, when the officer's in, in the building doing reports or something else. It's more of a, just a caged area with a cover on it.
Okay.
Counsel, your views?
I think it looks pretty good and I think the concept of the restroom for these days we're living in is, sounds like the, the way to go. One thing I would suggest, and I know we're tight for space, but I would try to fit at least the toilet and a sink in down over near the training briefing and the Sally Port area there. The, you know, this, this training room, and I realize you're not planning on using it, but it's, it's actually pretty good because you've got an outside door there on the front.
We did discuss that. We're, we're looking at possibly doing away with one of the interview rooms that's off the booking room. I think we can get away with just having one, one interview room in the back and we can still utilize the two rooms up front by the lobby if we need to, or an individual office to, to do business. And that'll put, you know, restrooms on, on both sides of the building.
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be, be good.
And one of the things that the officers that I picked up on today was they really wanted, they actually suggested it be inside the jail, what we're considering the jail is so that, and, and Dan maybe can help me with this, but then they're not having to unlock, take their weapon with them or, I, I don't, didn't quite understand it, but it sounds like there's a process to leave the jail.
Yeah.
And so they want a, a place inside there as they're booking somebody to use the restroom. Is sometimes they've been out for hours or dealing with this person and then they're trying to get them booked in and then now they got to try to clear everything and get to the other side of the building. So that, that was actually raised by several of the guys today and they were, they were also the ones that suggested that the second interview room would, would be better, better served as a restroom than an interview room.
Yeah. Well, that, that makes sense. One, and one other thing, and I don't know, I don't know what the structure is, but you always need more space down the road. A lot of it just for storage. And I, I realize there's all kinds of considerations, but how much empty attic space is there going to be and would there be a possibility to have some storage space up in that area for future?
So one of the things that I've been looking on this roof, we haven't got into those details completely, but I, I'll be able to tell you that once we get closer. But the, the one thing that I've been trying to really do here is to make our roof lines the ability to tie on simply. So the center section that we're getting ready to rebuild, that'll actually be ten-foot walls. The old section's eight-foot walls, which will put a nice roof line above the existing. And so the reason I did that is, is that our long-term plan is, is that the chief office goes away and that becomes another office and that's a hallway into another wing on the, on that side towards the museum. That being said, with the higher roof line, I can tie in at a lower roof line on the new building, giving us the space to expand out that side without having to come and tie back into the roofs and, and do all that extra work that we don't want to do. However, I do agree with you. We, we have storage issues not only here at Town Hall, we have them at Public Works and we have them at, at PD as well. And one of the things that we've talked about is taking that metal building and going, heading and erecting it over at Public Works to help with some of the storage issues that we're having. But you're correct, the storage is still not where we completely need it to be.
And I just bring that up and when you're looking at a building this size, sometimes when you get up in the rafters and things, I mean, there's, there's plenty of room for especially a storage room. I mean, not, not offices or anything like that I'm talking, but.
Yeah.
And I just wonder, that, that's something though that needs to be looked at before it's built so the trusses can be built to accommodate that. But that's very inexpensive square footage.
Yeah, you can put an attic right in trusses and we're a sixty-foot span with probably a, a ten-foot or twelve-foot center. So it would be, would be feasible. We just got to figure out how, the hardest part with second story stuff is now you got to build some sort of stairs to get there and all that. So we'll have to definitely look at that and see if we can make it fit. And maybe we can even look at an outside entrance into it and that might be our way to resolve the stairs. But yeah, for sure, I will make sure we look into that.
Okay. One, one comment just to add on the storage side and expansion. So granted, at some point when we do annex, if we were to have an annexation, I'll say it that way. The additional wing that we would put on that side towards the museum, that training room would be part of what we would move over to there along with offices. Then where you've got your evidence on one side and your records on one side, we'd be able to collapse the training room and split it between, because you're going to have more need for storage with, if, if we had four thousand more citizens. And so we'd be able to collapse the training room out and then expand the evidence and the records rooms. So we would be able to address it, some of it that way too. So looking at the future.
And that's exactly why we laid it out the way we did is we put that training room in the center for that exact purpose of what, for, for the long-term expansion.
In between the two, yeah.
Yeah.
If I put, if I put storage up in the attic in the building like that, I'd consider a dumbwaiter because there, there's almost no regulations and saves a lot of work just hauling stuff up and down.
You have an evidence processing. What does that mean?
That's a room where officers can bring evidence that, that need to package. They'll have a table in there. They'll have evidence supplies in there to, to do that. And when they're done packaging it, you know, putting all the information out they need, there's a little block, a rectangular block there between the evidence... there's a little block, a rectangular block there between the evidence processing room and the evidence storage room. What that is, is a pass-through locker system, so they can, they can submit their evidence into one side of that locker system, lock it, and then when the evidence technician comes in, he can pull it from the other side directly into the evidence room itself, so...
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Frigman?
I don't want to seem impatient. This has been a very long process and I think we're, it's so exciting that we're getting somewhere. I'd like to go back over, you're going to build a new end on that they're going to use while you redo the building that already exists. Is that correct? I want to make sure I understand this.
Yes, you're 100% correct. So in between the sergeant and the HD record storage, that, that's the split in between the new building and, and the old building. And so we want to try to get that new building built so we can move all the officers in there and we don't have a cost of trying to house them. We started to look at housing the officers and, and what we were going to have to get, you know, portable trailers to put them in and our cost was going through the roof. So what me and Keith talked about was, you know, we, let's take that money that we're going to spend on trying to house them and then make this just a little bit bigger so that it fits our needs. Right now, we're sitting at 11,677 square feet. The old building is 6,000 square feet, so we're almost adding on double to what the old building is. However, our last building that, or our last design and what we were going to do was right around 4,800 square feet, so we're about 1,000 feet, give or take, some difference, so.
Great, thank you. About a timeline.
So I want it to be done yesterday.
So I'm impatient, yes.
Right?
I know I'm not even half as impatient as the police department is.
So a couple of big hurdles we have to get through is, first off, we got to get it bid and we got to get the bid process done. And I, I mean, my intentions are to have that out by February of this year. We're probably looking at a couple hundred-page plan in this, so it's going to be fairly significant bid, obviously. We're also looking, we've got some other things that need to be resolved too before I can bid it, like the electricals in the way on the one side of the building, so I got to get that moved. And we also know that we have to remove the dirt that's out there down to the bedrock because it's the old building cinders. So these are some of the things that got to get done prior to it getting bid out because I need that finished up so that I can bid it and they know what they're looking at, so...
Any other questions from Council?
I am always just amazed at your foresight and the things that you see that could happen and I, I just appreciate your planning and ideas.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Well, this is information only, there's no motion, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Staff have anything to contribute before we adjourn?
No, I don't.
Staff have anything to contribute?
I'm thinking how happy I am right now. I, you know, I, I just have to say that we all would like to have had, be completing the police department right now because we've been talking about it for about a year and a half. But I'm grateful that we didn't jump on the original plan that we had, that the, that everything came together with the remote sales tax that's allowing us to build a better building that will meet the needs of the community for many, many, many years. And so another great thing that's come, come to pass, so...
Okay, well said.
Thank you.